Your Honor, we're ready.
Okay, there you go.
We got everybody on?
We do.
Okay.
Sorry for the delay.
No, no problem. Welcome to our August 17th City Council meeting. I quickly have a couple of notes that I would like everybody to be aware of. I know that a week ago, Des Moines and most of Iowa experienced a terrible thunderstorm like no other. Hurricane strength winds, torrential rains pounded a wide swath of the state, leaving, you know, a huge path of destruction across our state. There were a couple, three lives lost. There were homes, businesses, farm buildings destroyed, millions of acres of agricultural ground flattened. And for those of us with Mid-American Energy, they had 280,000 customers who lost power. We began to work and recover the city of Des Moines at its peak. Min Am had 140,000 outages in the Des Moines area. And they had, on their team, Mid-American, they had 2,000 people out working. And because worker safety is the highest point in an emergency like this, it took time and hard work on the part of Mid-American and city workers to get this huge job taken care of. I want to thank Mid-American for their work and their leadership and their men and women who put in long hours. But as I mentioned, I also want to thank all of our city public works crews who were tackling huge undertaking of cleaning up all this storm-related tree debris and damage. And about an hour ago, we learned that 200 city dump trucks have already been filled and unloaded at the disposal site along Harriet Street. We have 100 working on that job today, and they'll stay at it until 7:00 tonight, and then they'll start it all over again first thing in the morning. So, as the mayor and on behalf of everyone on the city council, we're proud of the efforts and so grateful for the commitment of everybody on that. And so, I again want to thank everybody. Also, for those of you who have appreciated the ALS interpreters, and tonight, you're going to notice that we are not using the interpreters, and that's because we're moving towards live closed captioning of our council meetings. So, we're pleased to make this transition since live captioning connects to more of our Des Moines residents. And the captioning system that we are using tonight and for our September 14th meeting is temporary while we finalize an arrangement that will ensure the highest accuracy and deliverables to our various platforms. So, we know that a lot of you appreciated those ALS interpreters. We want to thank them, but we want to take the next step and move up to the closed captioning. So, thank you all for that understanding. Let's go ahead and call our meeting to order, and I will ask the clerk to please take roll.
County?
Here.
Bozen?
Here.
Boss?
Here.
Gray?
Here.
Westergaard?
Here.
Mandelbaum?
Here.
Gatto?
Here.
Your Honor, we have a quorum.
Okay. This evening, we have council consider amending our procedural items in a continuing effort to conduct efficient and orderly meetings while encouraging and supporting through a robust citizen input. The city council this afternoon will consider amending our rules of order. The proposed changes would include the following rules. There's a citizen agenda request, and there are a manner of addressing the city council. There's time limits on citizen remarks and remarks of citizens to be, we ask them to be germane, and we ask that everybody follow our council rules, and failure to do so, we're going to have to limit your participation. And with more than one violation, we're going to have to ask that you not participate anymore in this particular meeting. So, I'm going to quickly read our procedural rules for the Des Moines City Council meeting. Whereas the mayor and the city council believe in and wish to support through thorough and robust public participation at city council meetings, and whereas criticisms and community feedback are supported and desired by the mayor and our city council, and whereas orderly and efficient conduct of our meetings, including germane citizen input, is essential to good and efficient government. And whereas non-german disruptive conduct and behavior can actually limit and deny free speech rights of other community members by preventing or delaying their opportunities to speak. And whereas Iowa Code Section 372.13, Sub 5, provides the city council shall determine its own rules of its proceedings in the Iowa Code Section 21.7, and authorizes the city council to make and enforce reasonable rules for the conduct of its meetings to assure those meetings are orderly and free from interference or interruption from spectators. And whereas the mayor and the city council wish to encourage citizen input while also conducting orderly and efficient meetings and amending the procedural rules for the Des Moines City Council, it's necessary to accomplish such objectives. And now, therefore, be it resolved by the city council of the city of Des Moines that the procedural rules of the Des Moines City Council are hereby amended and reflect the changes that have been posted and for our meeting commencing with our meeting this evening. Mr. Attorney, is there anything else that I should relate to our citizens?
I'm very aware of your honor.
All right. So, for that motion, I would ask someone to move that, and we'll go ahead and...
I'll move approval. This is Connie, I am Bozen, I will move approval.
All right, Connie, thank you. Would you pull the council, please?
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay? Can you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
I'm not getting any sound.
Okay, can you hear me?
She might not be able to hear me. Can you hear me? You know? I had an issue with the microphone. Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Okay. Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. I will say, for the consent items, item 5, I'm voting no. Item 32, does anybody wish to speak on that one?
We're on 2, Your Honor.
30?
On item 2 or item 32?
Item 32.
Yes, I do want to speak on item 32. This is Westergaard.
We're on item 2 on the agenda. We haven't gotten to the consent agenda yet.
Right. I moved item 2, Your Honor. I didn't know if you heard me or not.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, the sound is cutting in and out. I'm having a terrible time hearing.
All right. So, it has been moved, and would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
Okay. Item 2 is approving the agenda as presented and/or as amended. I will say, for the consent items, item 5, I'm voting no. Item 32, does anybody wish to speak on that one?
We're on 2, Your Honor.
Yep.
30? On item 2 or item 32?
Item 32.
Yes, I do want to speak on item 32. This is Westergaard.
We're on item 2 on the agenda. We haven't gotten to the consent agenda yet.
Right. I moved item 2, Your Honor. I didn't know if you heard me or not.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry, the sound is cutting in and out. I'm having a terrible time hearing.
All right. So, it has been moved, and would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. Item 3 is approving the consent agenda tonight. Those are items 3 through 47 II. On item 5, I vote no. Item 32, I believe council member Westergaard said that she wishes to speak.
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, item 47 II, is there anyone that wants to speak on that one?
No, Your Honor. This is Westergaard, and I'm not going to speak on it, but I am voting no.
Okay. And I see council member Gatto is voting no also.
Yes, Your Honor. And then, I have one clarification. Item 4C is continued to the first meeting in October, please. They actually have a liquor license that they can operate under.
It has been withdrawn.
Okay, thank you. I didn't know that.
Yep. Item 4C has been withdrawn.
Thank you.
All right. Other than that...
I'll move item 3, Your Honor.
Balance has been moved. Clerk, please pull the council.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
I do have a question. Were we, there were a couple hands up from the public. Were we supposed to take requests? No. We can ask if council...
There were a couple hands up. I didn't see any hands up.
I didn't see any hands up either.
There were two.
There are two.
Two, Josh.
Indira Shoemaker and LaShawn Winfield.
Okay, so those two people can be called on if council would make a motion to reconsider the consent agenda.
Generally, the consent agenda is items that are routine. They're enacted without separate discussion unless somebody, a council member, or someone else. The council would vote on whether or not we want to pull the digital ones that somebody might ask for from the general public. So, thanks, Josh, for pointing that out.
Those two people are down.
Should we ask what the item is? All right. Let's open up and see if what Indira has to, what item she would like to pull.
Indira?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah, what item do you have in mind?
I wanted 15, 27, 31, and 35.
Then council will have to make a motion if they want to do that.
Okay, item 15, 27, 31, and 35?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Was there one other person?
Looks like their hands down.
Okay.
Does council want to make a motion to remove either 15, 27, 31, or 35? Hearing no motion, move on.
All right. So, hearing no motion, we'll move on.
Go on to the next.
That takes us to the item that council member Westergaard asked to speak to, item 32. Item 32 is approving a donation agreement with Rebuilding Together Greater Des Moines Inc., doing business as Rebuilding Together regarding the playground at Union Park located at 2009 St. Louis Road, Council Communication Number 20-370. Council member Westergaard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take this opportunity to give a, give thanks to the Meredith Corporation and to Mel Meredith, who has graciously, is giving the city a donation that'll come through Rebuilding Together, which Rebuilding Together helps mostly elderly and handicap people with items that need repaired on their homes. But they are making an $85,000 donation that will go to the city for a new pla, go toward a new playground equipment at Union Park. And I just want it to be noted that this is the 15th city park and/or playground that the corporation and its foundation has contributed to. I've been involved with Rebuilding Together now for several years, and they are always there helping with the, helping with the projects. And so, I want to make note, it's not just, it's not only an $85,000 donation, which is a lot just on its own, but on October 15th, there will be the Community Build Day, and Meredith has its employees come out and work on projects with Rebuilding Together, and they will be there en masse on October 15th at Union Parks. So, you know, if you take a look at the employees paid for one day, that Meredith is still paying them their, their salary, but they're not at corporate working, they are out serving our community. I, I wouldn't even know how we could count how much money that would possibly involve. So, I just want to say thanks and how much we appreciate it. I'm, of course, thrilled that it's going to be in Union Park, which is in Ward 2, very popular park, used a lot, and it's, it's going to be great to have some new playground equipment there. So, thank you, Mel Meredith and the Meredith Corporation and the foundation. And that's the end of my comment.
All right. Linda, would you like to move it?
I would like to move item 32.
All right. Item 32, council member Westergaard has moved it. Would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes, motion carries.
All right. That item completes our consent agenda. Madam clerk, I see that it's just about 5:00 straight up. I think we have to move to our hearings at this time. And so, if you would note that our hearings start at 5:00. Our first item for hearing is item 52, which is on a request for Spot Free Car Wash LLC to amend the Plan DSM, future land use designation and rezone 1437 East 14th Street and 1518 Idaho Street from N3C Neighborhood District to RS1 Mixed Use District to a limited MX3-B Mixed Use District to allow the continuation of the existing car wash defined as vehicle sale, service, vehicle maintenance, repair minor as a use permitted by right and to rezone 1421, 1427, and 1433 East 14th Street from NX1 Neighborhood Mixed District to RS1 Mixed Use District to allow the reuse and/or redevelopment of the property for mixed use classification. Was there one other person?
Looks like their hand's down.
Okay.
Okay, sure. Any motions to move, any removal of items by council?
Does council want to make a motion to remove either 15, 27, 31, or 35?
Hearing no motion, move on.
All right, so hearing no motion, we'll move on.
Go on to the next.
That takes us to the item that councilmember Westergaard asked to speak to, item 32. Item 32 is approving a donation agreement with Rebuilding Together Greater Des Moines Inc. Doing business as Rebuilding Together regarding the playground at Union Park located at 2009 St. Laro Road. Council communication number 20-370. Councilmember Westergaard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to take this opportunity to give a... Give thanks to the Meredith Corporation and to Mel Meredith, who has graciously is giving the city a donation that'll come through Rebuilding Together, which Rebuilding Together helps mostly elderly and handicap people with items that need repaired on their homes. But they are making an $85,000 donation that will go to the city for a new pla... Go toward a new playground equipment at Union Park. And I just want it to be noted that this is the 15th city park and/or playground that the corporation and its foundation has contributed to. I've been involved with Rebuilding Together now for several years, and they are always there helping with the... Helping with the projects. And so I want to make note, it's not just... It's not only an $85,000 donation, which is a lot just on its own, but on October 15th, there will be the Community Build Day, and Meredith has its employees come out and work on projects with Rebuilding Together, and they will be there en masse on October 15th at Union Parks. So, you know, if you take a look at the employees paid for one day, that Meredith is still paying them their salary, but they're not at corporate working. They are out serving our community. I wouldn't even know how we could count how much money that would possibly involve. So I just want to say thanks and how much we appreciate it. I'm, of course, thrilled that it's going to be in Union Park, which is in Ward 2. Very popular park, used a lot, and it's gonna be great to have some new playground equipment there. So, thank you, Mel Meredith and the Meredith Corporation and the foundation. And that's the end of my comment.
All right, Linda, would you like to move it?
I would like to move item 32.
All right. Item 32. Councilmember Westergaard has moved it. Would you poll the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, that item completes our consent agenda. Madam Clerk, I see that it's just about 5 o'clock straight up. I think we have to move to our hearings at this time. And... So if you would note that our hearings start at 5 o'clock. Our first item for hearing is item 52, which is on a request for Spot Free Car Wash LLC to amend the Plan DSM, future land use designation, and to rezone 1437 East 14th Street and 1518 Idaho Street from N3C Neighborhood District to RX1 Mixed Use District to a limited MX3-B Mixed Use District to allow the continuation of the existing car wash defined as vehicle sale, service, vehicle maintenance, repair minor as a use permitted by right, and to rezone 1421, 1427, and 1433 East 14th Street from NX1 Neighborhood Mixed District to RX1 Mixed Use District to allow the reuse and/or redevelopment of the property for mixed-use classification. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested by Chris Bose, who is the attorney for the Spot Free Car Wash, and requires six votes. Is there any comment by... Yes. Okay, and I would tell before the hearings, I want everybody to know that there are four items tonight in total, and we have two zoning items and two other hearing items. The two zoning items, this being one, we will hear from the parties in interest, then the general public. The parties in interest include only the applicant for the rezoning and those persons living within 250 feet of the property to be rezoned, to whom the city has already sent notices. After all of the parties of interest have commented, we'll open it up to other members of the public for germane comments. And to add, the city clerk in calling in the parties of interest, I will ask everyone else not to raise their hand on the Zoom call unless they are zoning applicant or live within that 250 feet who received the mail notice for the rezoning. We'll also say that anyone who raises their hand before that and is... Is there time will be compared to the mailed list, and if you're not on the list, you'll be considered disruptive, and we won't be able to recognize you for the remainder of the meeting. So please wait until we get rid of those or work through the people who have been noticed and/or are the applicant before you raise your hand, so that we can keep this moving forward. And for those members of the general public who wait to raise their hand, we... They will be called on, and we'll give that portion of it, 15 minutes of total germane comment to that item. And I think we'll allow two minutes per person. You know, for the landmark hearing, by the way, this evening, the hearing is designed to allow the property owner to speak concerning the landmark designation. As the city is the property owner, the city's representative will have an opportunity to speak for up to five minutes concerning the topic, and the public will be called on if they would like to speak to it for 15 minutes. Again, all comments to be germane to that public comment and to not exceed the two minutes per person. For the vacation hearing and the ordinance, the hearing is designed to allow the public to comment concerning the discontinuance of the city property and the conveyance of property interest. As the city is the property owner, the city's representative again will have the opportunity to speak for up to five minutes concerning the topic, and the public will be called on for 15 minutes on this item as well. But again, we ask it to be germane to... To the issue, and again, not to exceed two minutes per person. So let's go ahead and open up item 52. Counsel, any comments on the Spot Free Car Wash? And if not, we'll allow Mr. Bose, the attorney for the car wash, to speak. And then any of the noticed general public will ask... Noticed parties in interest is how that's defined. So any comment, councilmembers? Hearing none, is Mr. Bose on?
I am on, your honor.
Chris, we'll turn it over to you.
We would just ask that you would move item 52. I think the materials in the packet for the council are self-explanatory. Thank you.
All right. Let's...
With that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to move item 52A and B.
All right, 52A and B have been moved. Are there any other noticed parties with their hands up?
There are none.
There are none? All right, are there any general public people who would like to speak to this item? We'd ask you to put your hand up at this time. We see none. The item has been moved. I will ask the clerk to please poll the council.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to item 53. Item 53 is on a vacation of excess parkland located east of an adjoining 101 Locust Street and in conveyance to the United States of America by and through the General Services Administration in consideration of conveyance of a permanent storm sewer easement within the 101 Locust Street address. The council communication on this item is number 20-359. A is the first consideration of the ordinance above, and B is the final consideration of the ordinance above. The waiver is requested. Would this be by the United States?
No.
Okay, I think it's by the city manager, who I think was probably contacted by GSA to get this sorted out. And that will require six votes. Is there anyone from the city to speak on this item? City manager, is there anybody? Okay? All right. Seeing none, is there anyone from the general public who would like to speak on this piece of parkland in conveyance to the United States through the General Services Administration in consideration for our easement, for our stormwater?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 53A and 53B.
All right, 53A and B has been moved. I will ask the clerk to please poll the council.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard? Westergaard? Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Westergaard is yes.
Thank you, Linda. I was gonna come back to you. Gatto?
Yes, Kay. Thank you.
Seven yes. Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 54 is on a request from Electro Management Corporation as the owner for review and approval of a PUD Final Development Plan Amendment City Gateway Phase 1A for the property located at 4240 Army Post Road to allow the expansion of the existing warehouse with 60,000 square feet building addition and onsite surface parking expansion. Any comments from the council? And if not, we'll ask if there's anybody from... The Electro Management, who is the applicant, or any parties of interest. I see none from Electro Management. Are there any parties of interest? Okay, I don't see any.
There are none.
Okay. Let's ask if the general public has any comments on this one. Citizen comment?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 54.
Okay, item 54 has been moved. Clerk, would you please poll the council?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
None, thank you. Let's move on to item 55. Item 55 is on a city-initiated request for the designation of the Drake Park Playground Shelter at 2300 Drake Park Avenue as a local landmark, and this item was continued from the June 22nd council meeting. Council communication number 20-352. Counsel, any comment on this one?
Staff doesn't want to speak to this one.
Seeing none. I understand that there will be no comment from staff. I think this is pretty self-explanatory. But let's open it up and see if there's any members of the public who would like to make comment on this item 55, Drake Park Playground Shelter as a local landmark. Anybody from the general public want to comment on this one?
Seeing none, Mr. Mayor, I'll move item 55.
Item 55 has been moved. Clerk, would you please poll the council?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, thank you. It's 5:12. Let's note that the hearings ended at 5:12. Let's now go back to our items after the consent agenda. These are ordinances first consideration. The first ordinance amending Chapter 114 of the Mistful Code related to intersection site distance at street intersections. This is council communication number 20-360. Any comment, counsel, on this?
I heard none, your honor. I'll move item 48.
Item 48 has been moved. All right, looks like we... Do we have a hand up?
City Assistant City Manager Malcolm Yankins.
Okay, Malcolm?
Disregard, that was in error.
All right, thank you, Malcolm.
Okay, thank you.
All right, item 48 has been moved. Would you poll the council, please, clerk?
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right, item 49, which is amending Chapter 114 of the Mistful Code regarding traffic regulation changes as follows. Council communication number 20-363. A is a code correction to correct street name. It's East Lenwood Drive, east of Southeast 14th Street. B is code corrections to match field conditions at Martin Luther King Jr. Parkway from Glenore Road to Madison Avenue. Counsel, any comments on this one, 49A or B?
I heard none, your honor. I'll move 49A and B and waive the second and third reading.
All right, 49A and B has been moved, and it's been asked to waive the second and third reading. Are there any members of the public who would like to make comment?
There are none, your honor.
All right, hearing none. Let's go ahead and poll the council, please.
County?
Yes.
Bozen?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
All right. Item 50 is amending Sessions 50-26, 50-32.05, 50-34, and 50-35. These are relating to floodplain development regulations. This item was continued from the May 18th, 2020 council meeting. Council communication number 20-357. Any comments by council on these items?
I hear none, your honor. I'll move item 50.
All right, item 50 has been moved. Any hands up from the general public?
Yes, JB Conlin.
Okay. JB?
JB? Were you commenting on the floodplain ordinance?
Yes, can you hear me, Kay?
Yes, we can.
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you, mayor. Thank you, council. I've been involved in this, and as many of you know, we've got some property in Lenders District that is down and was hit pretty hard by the flood. My concern has always been that this ordinance was going to create a great problem for these communities that are already existing in there, including individual houses that are in there. If this requirement is still the same as it was on the last reading that I saw, it would require a structure that was damaged more than 50% in two flood events to be completely compliant with Code 50, which means raising the building up above the floodplain. It's a very, very big lift, for lack of another better term, in order to get this done. It's very... It would be very expensive to comply with this. So I would just ask if the purpose is still to only slightly lower floodplain insurance values? That doesn't seem to make sense. Is... If I could just ask that question, if those qualifications are still in there on two flood events that reached over 50%, or is it one?
JB, this is Westergaard, and I'll let Steve respond, but I believe we took that out.
That would be great.
Does Steve Neighbors want to comment? But I'm looking at the blue letter, and it says, "The May 4th City Council Meeting, City Council directed staff to remove the cumulative substantial damage tracking requirements from the Chapter 50 ordinance."
Time is on to answer that question.
Great.
Yes, I'm the mayor and members of the council. This is Tom Vlog, deputy city engineer. And to answer that question, yes, we did remove the cumulative substantial damage tracking requirements that was requested at the May 4th meeting. And I believe... I believe Adam Prelop is also available to speak. He's been more heavily involved in the development of these guidelines, so I believe he is also available. That is my understanding that we did remove that.
Yep, this is Adam Prelop. I can confirm that.
Okay, good. I don't see other hands up. Kay, do you? Kay?
There is one, your honor.
Okay.
Hi, folks. Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. This is Chelsea Chisholm-Vargas. I am not speaking to disobey the rules, but I did just want to let the council know that the closed captioning option is very inaccurate, so it's limiting people's ability to actually participate. So I just wanted you folks to know that the interpreters that have been there before are much more effective. have been there before are much more effective. Sorry to interrupt for that, but I wanted to make sure this is accessible for everyone.
Thank you. We'll check on that technology, Mayor. Yep, hold the council, please. Kay? Would you pull the council, please?
County?
Yes.
Bowson?
Yes.
Boss?
Yes.
Gray?
Yes.
Westergaard?
Yes.
Mandelbaum?
Yes.
Gatto?
Yes.
Your Honor, that's seven yes. Motion carries.
Okay. Now we move on to communications and reports. These are generally persons wishing to speak to the city council under the sort of our public speaking item, the agenda. We will only be calling on those people who have registered to speak. And because of the number of speakers this evening, each speaker, under our regulations, we're going to have 30 minutes. So each speaker will receive this evening, what do you think, 85 seconds to make their comments. So please keep your own time, because at the end of the 85 seconds, we're going to have the clerk announce time and your mic will be closed. So we'd like you to stay very succinct and on point. If there's additional information that you feel that you would like to express on your issue to the council or the city manager, please send us emails or letters to City Hall, and we will get staff or others to follow up with you. But again, we ask each speaker to be germane, and we appreciate your comment and your input. Let's start. Item 51. This is a request to speak by Jerry Cox regarding speed bumps at East Watchers between 3:07 and 3:29 because of accidents related to speeding. Jerry, your honor. Well, I guess we'll have to, is she, do you have her up?
I haven't found her. If there's anybody, or if Jerry is on a phone, you have to hit star nine to speak, or raise your hand.
There's one hand up, Kay, but it's not Jerry.
No, it's Frank Chido. I haven't seen Jerry. We can, we can mark her, and if she shows up later, I guess come back to that.
Okay, can we have a motion receiving file?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to receive and file, item 51A.
All right.
And I, and just for the record, I've never had any conversation with Jerry about any of this, but I would like a record of accidents for the last three years in that 100 block of East Watchers, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, the item 51A has been moved. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Sentient? Hearing none. Let's move on to 51B. 51B is regarding African-American Unemployment and Empowerment Board Project. I believe David Meeks is asking to speak on this one. David?
Yes, thank you, Council, for the opportunity to speak. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Regarding the Empowerment Board Project, and thank the council members also who have given me feedback, Gatto, Boss, Bowson, thank you very much. The Empowerment Board, this important project works in the community, and I'm repeating this because this might be some person's first time hearing it. It's to reduce black unemployment and underemployment in the seven largest communities in Iowa. The project doesn't duplicate anything, and by design utilizes all resources within the community. It's endorsed by the State of Iowa Department of Human Rights and Community Advocacy Services Division. And why do they endorse it? Because blacks are five times higher in unemployment than others, and the underemployment. Blacks with degrees, masters, doctorates, working for $10 an hour, because they're told that's all that can be offered. I know there's a lot of issues in the community. There's a lot of issues. And black unemployment is amongst the high importance of our issues. The quality of life of people matters. And I know that, I communicate with you all, and I know that you know how important it is. I know that. I need you to let me know if there's a workshop that needs to be done to connect the dots. Let's do it. But please, let's make something happen today. And if you want to know how important it is, just ask a black person that can't find a meaningful job, or they might be amongst the 30%.
That was time.
All right, David, thank you for your comments, and I'm going to refer that to the city manager to, let's try to put something together, to have that conversation around this. And I know that David has talked to a number of our council members, and so, David, thank you for your input. Could we have a motion to receive and file and refer to the city manager to either put it on a work session or figure out some other method to get good input?
Mayor of County, this is Boss. I'd be honored to file and receive, and to move forward with some type of a workshop or a meeting with Joshua Barr and Civil and Human Rights Commission.
Okay.
We can't just keep doing the same thing. Thank you.
Yep. The motion's been made. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any dissenting? Hearing none. Thank you again, David. Good comments. Item C, Ruth Burgess-Thompson, to speak regarding the city's response to COVID. Ruth?
She is not there.
Okay.
I'll move to receive, I'll move to receive and file Ruth's comments, or noncomments.
All right, and if she pops back on, Kay, let us know, and we'll put her on towards the end. All right, item's been moved. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, all right. Next speaker is Jeff Young on 51D regarding a proposed car show at 4801 Franklin Avenue on the north parking on the 5th of September with a rain date of the 7th of September. Jeff, are you on?
If anyone is using a telephone number, Jeff, if you are, you hit star nine. He's not there, Your Honor.
Okay.
I'll move to receive and file.
Okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any dissenting? Hearing none. We'll move on to item E. Peyton DeShumaker, regarding citywide mask mandate. Peyton? Peyton?
She's here. I just found her, yes.
Good, thank you.
Hello?
Peyton?
All right, Peyton, regarding the citywide mask mandate.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. All right, so I'm here today to call on the city council to issue a mask mandate in the city of Des Moines. This council has previously passed a mandate that requires masks in all city buildings, but why has that policy not been expanded to the city as a whole? I know that each one of you cares about your constituents in the city and want everyone in the city of Des Moines to be safe from the deadly pandemic that's currently attached to our country. It's that our state government is content on being ineffectual in this arena. We are one of only two states with absolutely no mask requirements and are the only, one of only 16 that has no statewide mask mandate. Since our state government is not interested in protecting the people of the state, our local government need to step up and take this charge. You, the Des Moines City Council, have the opportunity to be leaders in the state by protecting the people of Des Moines and issuing a mask mandate. There's ample evidence both in the lab and in the field that masks when properly worn to prevent the spread of COVID-19, may block respiratory droplets which carry the virus, and when those are, when those are blocked, this prevents community spread and protects the community that you serve, which deserves to be protected. With that protection should also come the feeling of safety in the city of Des Moines. The safety should include protection from persecution by the police as well. As I call you to pass this mask mandate, I would also urge that this mandate not be an excuse for the police to brutalize our most vulnerable communities. While the mask mandate would keep us safe from this deadly virus, it would not matter if we were safe from this deadly disease. We are still subject to out of hand brutal police department. So I would ask that you make this mask mandate a low enforcement priority with the police, and instead of having them issue misdemeanors or try to attack people for not wearing masks.
Thank you, Peyton.
Mr. Mayor? I'll move to receive and file. I will add, I do think a mask mandate is an important signal that we can send, and I would support, I would support us taking action on that in the future, either through ordinance or other action. But I'll move to receive and file the comments.
All right. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. Thanks, Peyton. Item F, Indira Shumaker, regarding the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission review of Des Moines Police Department use of force during protests. Indira?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Des Moines Police have been present and involved in protests since the beginning of the protests in Des Moines. At these protests, law enforcement have deployed tear gas, flashbangs, rubber bolts, pepper spray, and pepper gel, and have assaulted protesters with riot shields, fists, and around 200 arrests were made since May 29. We need to know what role DMPD took in the incident. Which department fired off weapons? Which department made arrests? When did DMPD use force against protesters, pets, or children? Council and the public needs to know. As police interact with protesters is such a contentious issue, it is important to have transparency in the extent the law allows. I know city council is invested in an effective police force in Des Moines. If there is a question of the police following the law they enforce, or denying our most basic First Amendment right to free speech and right to assemble, there's a question of public trust and therefore a question of police effectiveness. Issues like this need to be addressed publicly to restore trust in institution of the police and in city council's ability to check an institution with so much power. I demand council take three actions. Require DMPD submit use of force reports during protests to the council and make these reports public. Council employs the Des Moines Civil and Human Rights Commission to review findings of the police investigation and make a recommendation of finding to city council, and make the finding and recommendation of CHRC public as well. These are very important for ensuring transparency, public trust, and finding out what exactly happened at these events. Thank you very much.
I'll move to receive and file the comments.
Mr. Mayor, I, I support receiving and file the comments. I do think that it's reasonable that we have accountability. I've called for making as much of the review as possible public, and I do think additional review or consultation with the Civil and Human Rights Commission for recommendation on further action, I think is an appropriate step that I can support as well. So I'm interested in further conversation among the council about, about that issue.
All right, item's been moved. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none, thank you. Let's move on to item G. This is from Frank Swanson regarding city council priorities. Frank, are you on?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. My name is Frank Swanson. I live at 62835th Street in Des Moines. I'm here to talk about priorities. First of all, I couldn't have said it better than Indira. Not to speak cliche, but Martin Luther King once said, "Budgets are moral documents." That's a concept I'm here to talk about today because I think this member, the members of this council have shown their morals with their values and this budget. Our values show that you prefer incarceration, you prefer the brutalization of minors and activists, the surveillance of the same, the use of the legal gears to disenfranchise the same, the use of chemical weapons on the same over almost all else. We value these things over the vulnerable of our society. We can't let this stand any longer. I believe it was Councilwoman Westergaard who said on her public Facebook that she did not see how $100,000 check to the police for unneeded ammunition would improve education opportunities and affordable housing amongst other things. To me, this was tone deaf at worst, and at best, it gets to what we want from this council. We want imagination. We want new ideas. We've lived in this Des Moines for long enough, where the city council okays Hubble Development after Hubble Development, easements and whatnot. We need more, and that's why we call Monday after Monday, asking you to think bigger. In the last three months, I've met people in this community who gave me hope and inspiration more than anybody else I've met when I've lived in Des Moines, and made me happy to call it home. I echo my comrades in demanding John Sarkone drop charges against all...
That was time.
I'll move to receive and file, letter G.
All right, and Frank, we'll continue to discuss the city council priorities, and appreciate your input. All in favor, the receiving file, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? All right, thank you. Let's move on. Chris Hyman, regarding the defunding of the police department. Chris, are you on?
There he is.
Chris?
Chris?
Can you unmute yourself, Chris?
Chris, are you there?
I think you're on.
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay, you're on.
All right, so then I do just want to speak about the processes of defunding the police, but since we're allowed limited time, I'll just speak on the basics that there should be more funding to school programs and social service programs that are available in these communities to better help these people, such as housing programs out here. And since we're going to be opening up to a meeting with Scott Sanders later, I'll just leave my comments to them. Thank you.
Okay, thanks for the input, Chris.
I'll receive and file.
All right, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposition? Thank you. Item I is Lily Nellens regarding the Des Moines Police Department and behavior. Lily?
Lily, you have the floor.
Great, thank you. I'm a lifelong Des Moines resident, and I'm here today because of how disappointed I am in our state government. After the incredible Black Lives Matter march to the Merritt House on June 3rd, I mistakenly thought our government had the bravery and courage to put a win on the right side of history. Instead, the police had been allowed to wage a targeted and violent campaign against black people and those standing with them. The same day, the police racial profiling ordinance was passed to clear out one of their most vicious attacks. I was there on June 22nd, and it was crystal clear DMPD's goal was to enact as much pain and suffering as possible. As we ran towards our parks complying with disbaral orders, myself and other protesters fell back, exhausted, unable to keep running. A DMPD officer threatened us with a siren and told us to stop, stop moving even to catch a breath, or we would be arrested. As we gulped for air, clearly in pain, he laughed. And what have our elected officials done? And what have our elected officials done? Given the police more money to continue terrorizing Des Moines citizens. The least the city council wants to do is launch an independent investigation into DMPD behavior this summer. And then, they need to clarify the city on the right side of history by doing what Black Lives Matter has asked them to do. I am concerned that they've been telling you to please listen to the hard work and research Black Lives Matter has put into this, and place an immediate moratorium on eviction, de-criminalize candidates, create a community review board, and defund the Des Moines Police Department.
I was going to say I will receive and file. I too want to say that I follow up what Josh said at the last meeting about having a review by our Des Moines Civil and Human Rights on some of the incidents of use of force. So I'll receive and file Lily Nellens' comment.
Lily, I couldn't really hear you all that well. It was really broken up. Do you have a printed copy you could send to the city clerk? Hello, Lily?
She's muted. I disable when they're done.
Lily, I think the request here is to, if you have, if you could put your comments in writing and send it on, I think one of our council members was having a little trouble of hearing you. We'd appreciate it. Thank you. We have a motion to receive. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposition? Hearing none. We'll move on to J. This is J for Jalen Campbell regarding special meeting of the city council regarding issues of the Des Moines Police Department. Jalen, your mic is open. Floor's yours.
Hi, can I be heard?
Yes, sir.
Hello, council. Yeah, so I am calling or speaking today to speak on a special meeting I'm requesting of the city council to call. I know that I got an email that Scott Sanders is hosting some sort of special meeting. I would like to expand this to a full meeting of the council. I want this meeting to be a conversational meeting where we are able to ask questions of our council and get their feedback and response and hear how they're thinking, because we've had protests going on for over three months now in the city of Des Moines, and you all know that there are some deep-seated issues that people have with the Des Moines Police Department and policing as a whole. You all know that folks are calling for a restructuring of our police. Folks have been brutalized by our police. We need an investigation into the protests that have been happening and the use of force. We need an investigation into the priorities of the police as we see the police are coming out in full force and we're trying to express our First Amendment rights. We need to talk about where the funding is going from the city and how, why the police department is getting 40% of the city's budget while other folks are struggling here in this city during a global pandemic. We just had a natural disaster. The city needs to reprioritize its citizens, and we need to have a special meeting of the council to talk specifically about the Des Moines Police Department. We need input from community members. We need to hear feedback from the Des Moines City Council, because what we're seeing right now is the city council continuously silencing people. We were supposed to have five minutes each to speak on our agenda item, and y'all gave us 85 seconds. That is not fair. Y'all are trying to silence us. You changed the entire rules of the council meeting today just intentionally.
I will move to receive and file letter J's comments.
Any other comment? Would you bold the, well, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right. Any opposition? Hearing none. Let's move on to K. K is Haley Dixon regarding the police department funding.
Haley, you're on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I had a lot to say to you tonight, but since you've taken our five minutes in exchange for 85 seconds, I'm going to go off script, and I will be sending each of you what I had to say. My name is Haley Dixon. I'm a small business owner here in Des Moines. I own a cafe, similar to Broad is actually. The only difference is I don't have the power to line up armed police force in front of my cafe when someone I don't want to speak to comes by. I wanted to talk to you about the DMPP budget, but before we start on that, let's address the email that was sent to people who signed up to address the council tonight. The email sent by city manager Scott Sanders, who I hope is listening, was intentionally misleading. How dare you all try and deter your community from speaking to their representatives? I cannot fathom why you'd be spending your time and money on discussing DMPP budget and not working on mandates or eviction moratoriums. Why are you giving them more money? The council needs to immediately address the demands of BLM. I want to assure you that we are not going anywhere. You all should get on board or get out. I want to close with a line from a song I recently learned. It goes, "There was a racist in a town, and Joe Gatto was his name-o. Have a good night, council."
I would love to receive and file letter K's comments.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposition? Hearing none. Let's move on to L. Savannah Rhodes regarding the Des Moines Police treatment of protesters. Savannah?
Me?
Savannah?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. So this past weekend, when police brutality occurred against protesters in Pittsburgh, the mayor, Bill Perdido, issued a statement denouncing the police department's actions the very next day. This is the type of response activists in Des Moines deserve. These activists are doing their work in our community day in and day out. They are doing hard work to improve the quality of life for everyone in our community and the entire state. They're providing meals, school supplies, community education, support for the houseless, support for mothers, clean up after this past storm, and the list goes on. When you use the term protester to describe the group, it's easier to vilify and ignore their message, but you need to remember this isn't a homogenous group of agitators. This is a group of Iowans made up of teachers, students, immigrants, longtime residents, youth, retirees, and members of the clergy, and so on. These community members don't want to live in a place with massive economic disparity, racial inequity, and a culture of police brutality. We aren't attending these meetings and protesting in the streets for fun. We're doing it for change, and the time for change is now. Unchecked power of a government which doesn't listen to its people is much scarier than a group of community members attempting to use their First Amendment rights. Be on the right side of history. I implore you to support the members of this community by holding a special meeting and by issuing a statement condemning the use of violence by the Des Moines Police Department. Thank you.
All right. Somebody give us a motion to receive Savannah's comments.
I'll move to receive and file.
There you go.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, thank you. Next speaker is M, Lee Walker regarding the Des Moines Police Department racial bias training. Lee?
Hi, it's actually Leah Waller. I don't know where the K came from, but I am demanding transparency and improvement on DMPD's racial bias training. I am deeply concerned about the way black people are treated by the Des Moines Police Department, as well as the department's inability to address its own issues. As of now, officers are only required to do two hours of bias training each year, and that only started in 2016. I was able to find several news articles from DMPD where they acknowledged the biases that their officers have and their need to work on that. However, a few articles of acknowledgement and a two-hour training are not enough to drive long-term change. On a similar note, 85 seconds is not enough for speakers. I also want to say I did find an optional course that only up to 30 officers can take for eight hours each year, and it costs $145 per officer to take. I was unable to find any actual course content, as well as any data backing up these courses to prove that they are effective, so I would like to know what data is being recorded to measure any changes or lack thereof. Thank you, council members and Mayor Clowney, for your time.
Thank you, Lee.
Mayor, I'll move to receive and file. I do think that it's worthwhile for us to look holistically at our training. I know we've added de-escalation training and implicit bias training, and thinking about, I would like to have a better understanding of how much time we're spending on various components of training and understand that balance going forward. So I'd be willing to have more conversation about that.
All right. Let's refer that city manager and do we have a motion to receive and file, please?
From Josh.
From Josh?
Josh, Payton.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposition? Thank you. Item Marcus Cohen regarding Des Moines North-South Connector Proposal, DM, AMPO, LRTP, Illustrated Project List. Marcus?
Marcus is unable. Marcus is unable to-- Yeah, he can't send me an email saying he could not attend the meeting tonight, so I'll move and receive and file.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposition? Thank you. Item O is Aviva Lotsky regarding eviction enforcement. Aviva?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yeah.
My last name is actually Jotsky. The L should be a J. Anyway, council members, I'm calling on you to immediately implement an eviction moratorium for the well-being of your constituents. Specifically, I'd like to speak about the eviction of houseless people. A week or so ago, I was called to help houseless people move after being given only 10 minutes notice of an eviction. Their belongings were thrown away and they were chased out of their living space by police. Because of the short notice, I didn't arrive until over an hour had passed when the eviction began. However, when I did arrive, the police were watching from a nearby parking lot. Only one person was left at the houseless camp, and they were leaving, yet the police remained. The police had been sitting in that parking lot for multiple hours. To me, this is a waste of time and resources, and it makes me question why exactly the police need $70 million in funding. Back to my original point, we need an eviction on, sorry, we need a moratorium on evictions. Evictions are not a solution to the problem, and the people of Des Moines deserve better. We need an eviction moratorium to protect the well-being of Des Moines residents. Evictions have many detrimental effects on the people, but because my time was cut short, I will just list them. I was going to explain them. They make it difficult for people to vote because of voter registration laws and because of the need to prove residence. They force kids away from their school, and in this time of great instability, that could be very detrimental to students' health and mental well-being. A lot of people, after they've forced, or after they've undergone an eviction, it's very hard for them to find a new place to live because landlords will reject--
That was time.
All right. Aviva, thank you. Aviva, if you're still on, I'll just tell you that we have asked the city legal to take a look at it, and we're going to get an opinion out on that as to what authority the city has, because we're concerned about that as well. And thanks for bringing that up. If somebody could give us a motion to receive and file Aviva's comments.
I'll move to receive and file.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none. Let's move on to P. This is Sam Rizel regarding the Des Moines Police Department's budget. M?
Hello, can y'all hear me?
Yes, sir, we can.
Thank you for this time. I wanted to talk about the Des Moines Police Department's budget today. Last year, the city of Des Moines allocated 39% of general funds budget to DMPD. That was $70 million of $181 million in general funds budget to the police. This was more than the next three department budgets combined: fire, which was 23%, finance, which was 8%, and park and recreation, which was 7%. With such an astronomical budget, the DMPD cleared only 17% of burglary cases, only 42% of arsons, 27% of thefts, only 32% of motor vehicle thefts, and only 33% of robberies. They are inefficient and incompetent. What they've been really good at doing is at raking in astronomical amounts of money through fines and pervertures. Because in 2017 and 18, the DMPD made $2,033,000 in fines and pervertures. This was more than doubled in 2018, 19, when they raked in $4,716,000 in fines and pervertures. This coincides with the increase in homeless population in greater Des Moines area and in Polk County. Our police department is inefficient, incompetent, and is led by a racist who has been pictured at a Trump rally. I ask that the city council defund the DMPD and direct 20% of the--
That was time.
I'll move to receive and file item P.
All right. Item P has been moved. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposition? All right, thank you. Let's move on to Q, which is Gabrielle Watkins regarding the Des Moines Police Department's use of force in a citywide mask mandate. Gabrielle?
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can.
Cool. I don't know, I'm going to do both of these in 85 seconds, but I'll try. Okay, so the DMPD has been using excessive force against protesters since May. On the night of May 30th, the DMPD used tear gas on protesters multiple times, including on a peaceful crowd in front of the Capitol. Officers shot tear gas and flashbangs at us at head level, and one hit me in the back of the head, resulting in a laceration that required nine stitches. My experience is only one of many brutal instances where police has escalated situations with a lethal amount of force. I've had friends who were shot with rubber bullets, maced, beaten with batons, and followed by police after leaving events. Even more obscene is the obvious bias that Des Moines police have shown towards black protesters during actions. The DMPD has made every effort to deter black people and organizers by arresting them in public places and discriminately attempting to arrest more black people during protests. I strongly encourage the council to adopt the demands laid out by the Des Moines Black Lives Matter movement, including implementing a civilian review board. And next one. Governor Reynolds, an official with a 22% approval rating, has resisted calls to implement a mask mandate. Despite this, many city governments throughout the state have defied Reynolds and chose to prioritize the lives of their citizens over the governor's blatant political agenda. Polk County is currently leading the state in COVID cases, averaging about 55 new cases per day since the beginning of June with a weekly increase rate of 20%, yet implementing a mask mandate. And certain cities have decreased COVID rates by up to 21% over a two-week period. I urge these lives over Governor Reynolds' political agenda and implement a mask mandate. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I will move item Q. Some of the folks keep referring to Black Lives Matter. I believe it's, they are not chartered under Black Lives Matter anymore, so you might want to get that clarified with some of the leaders of black liberation movement now.
All right. Could we have a motion to receive and file?
I did.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Mr. Mayor, I've got a question on that last item. I know some police departments and their use of force policy, specifically related to tear gas, rubber bullets, and projectiles like that, have a policy that they are not to be aimed at people's head. What is our policy on that? Could I get the specifics from our use of force on that and how that's being handled?
Refer to the city manager and give us sort of an update. All in favor of receiving and file Gabrielle's comments? Say aye.
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 The opposition, hearing none. Let's move on to R. Adam Kellan regarding concerns with recent virtual council meetings. Adam?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to have to change what I was going to say a little bit, because I was planning on having five minutes to speak. I had a whole thing written out, and I wanted to allow the public to talk about things they haven't been allowed to in the past, because the council's been silencing people who question what's been happening in these meetings. It's off-topic, which I think is strange, because on a sinking ship, anybody talking about a sinking ship, like, the sinking of the ship is always related to what's happening on the ship, and what's happening in these meetings as they're falling apart and as you're silencing people is always related to what we're talking about. I'm just going to bring up some of the things that I had on the list. Can't touch them all in 85 seconds. The Zoom meetings are inaccessible, as they currently are. City council is paid to connect these meetings and still struggles, so how are members of the public supposed to know more than city council members to participate in public comments? They're supposed to be open to the public, but people have been cut off for things like not having a 505 area code or having certain different devices, so we know that these aren't really open to the public. We know that in past weeks, people have been silenced, oh, that's the same thing, sorry. Um, city council has allowed evictions to proceed against the CARES Act in recent weeks. How is a person who's been affected supposed to access a Zoom meeting, especially without internet or power, as we just had a huge storm last week? Um, I'm not sure how people who have the power out are supposed to attend these meetings or their internet out. Um, the emergency meeting seemed like a huge problem, because there's actually rules about having meetings at regular time, not at regular time. How are working Iowans supposed to access a meeting at nine AM? Um, moving forward, uh, city council's been using violence to punish or silence critics. Council rushed a vote, spending a hundred, around a hundred thousand dollars for police weapons. Riot cops and Bearcat were sent to stand by Joe Gatto's business to stop BLM march. The same people that Joe Gatto was talking about for Zoom.
I will move to receive and file. Item R.
R, uh, those comments, uh, it's been moved, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposition, hearing none? Let's move on to S. Uh, Josephina O'Connor Miller, uh, regarding the need for an eviction moratorium. Josephina?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yep, my name's Josephine O'Connor Miller. Um, I'm here to speak about the need for a eviction moratorium in the city of Des Moines. The city of Des Moines has some of the worst availability of affordable housing in the country, according to data from the Urban Institute. For every one hundred extremely low-income residents in Polk County, there are only thirty accessible units. The Polk County Continuum of Care reports that in the first quarter of twenty-twenty, forty-three percent of people experiencing homelessness cited issues of employment or income as the reason they experienced homelessness. The current Polk County, uh, rate of unemployment is nine-point-six percent, that is up from three-point-one pre-pandemic. People still do not have their jobs back, we still need a moratorium on evictions. People who, due to the pandemic, supportive housing programs in our city have been put on hold. People who have been told that they are approved for assistance through programs like CAP are not being allowed to move in. People who are in charge of these programs are being told that they cannot disperse resources or funds. Rental assistance programs are facing funding uncertainty and are no longer able to fulfill requests. Shelters are also at risk for COVID-nineteen outbreaks, and this will, and this will affect individuals who are, and children who are attempting to learn and do distance learning, uh, disproportionately. How are people and students evicted from their homes supposed to work from home, learn from home, live from home? Further, we have already heard about the violence of, experienced by people camping at the hands of the Des Moines Police Department. We need to allow people to stay in their homes during a pandemic. Renters on Des Moines are in a, in public, and you have the ability to help them. Please put in state a moratorium on evictions in the city of Des Moines.
I'll receive and file, and also, just to follow up what you already said, Mayor Clowney, about we're checking into it, I think we also need to get what other programs are available that we have, uh, for rental assistance and different programs that are out there.
All right, could we, uh, we have a, a motion? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? Hearing none? Uh, let's move to, uh, T, which is Makala Clark regarding the Des Moines Police Department's budget. Makala?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm demanding that the Des Moines Police budget be defunded and have the money reallocated to Civil and Human Rights Commission, Education, and Housing. I'm also demanding that the city council come together to declare a special meeting addressing the Des Moines Police budget as well as their actions over these past couple months. The police violence that I have witnessed and experienced over the past few months, which I should say, black residents of Des Moines have been experiencing throughout their whole life, is encouraged by the budget. If the police did not have so much money to spend on tear gas, rubber bullets, flash grenades, brutalize people of color in this city, your constituents, they would have to think twice before attacking people. We also need to acknowledge how much Des Moines police has had to use on settlements, largely for racial profiling and excessive force. In twenty-eighteen, the city had to pay eight-hundred thousand dollars because of an excessive force settlement for brutality by Officer Greg Wessels. This is almost double the Civil and Human Rights Commission budget for a year. Five thousand once again this year for excessive force and racial profiling, once again by Sergeant Craig Wessels, by allowing police brutality to have zero consequences. The police taking thirty-nine percent of the budget allows and encourages the brutality by allowing officers off the hook and wasting money that could go to better help your constituents instead of terrorizing them. That's all.
All right, thank you.
I'll receive and file.
All right, motion to receive and file, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Opposition? Hearing none? Item U, uh, from Carter White regarding the Des Moines Police Department. Carter?
Closed captioning is not an alternative to ASL interpretation. The closed captions are extremely inaccurate. I recommend those who are not deaf or hard of hearing re-watch this meeting on YouTube with the volume muted and try following along. Additionally, closed captions do not convey emotion or mood of a person speaking. Redirect funds from DMPPD to fund ASL interpreters. This weekend, unarmed, non-violent protesters marched in the streets just to be met with a group of counter protesters heavily armed with guns and chemical weapons. The DMPPD is a, sadly, a hyper-militarized force stomping down on any and all demonstrations. Google what a Lenko Bearcat looks like. It's a three-hundred-thousand-dollar bulletproof tank-like vehicle that looks like it's from a war zone, and bold white letters on the side, it reads, "Police." This weapon is the perfect symbol for DMPPD, too expensive, too aggressive, overreactive, and menacing to the community. Why is this council okay with their police terrorizing people in Des Moines? Marching in the streets has been crucial to almost every movement for social justice, gay rights, racial civil rights, women's rights, migrant workers' rights, and so many others would not have progressed without unpermitted street marches. Councilperson Mandelbaum posted a photo on Twitter with the late Representative John Lewis with the caption, "John Lewis represented the best of us. His legacy continues to grow as those standing on his shoulders continue to find good trouble in the fight for justice. May his memory be a blessing." Let me tell you, those of us who are standing on his shoulders finding good trouble in the fight for justice are being thwarted by the abuse and bullying from the DMPPD. I am demanding that DMPPD stop terrorizing people...
Time.
All right, could we have a motion to receive and file, uh, Carter's comments?
I'll move to receive and file.
All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposition? Hearing none, item passes. Want to thank all of our speakers, uh...
Um, Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I got a text from Ruth Thompson, who is one of our earlier speakers, who we didn't find on the call at the time, that I think she is now on the phone.
All right, Kay, do you see her?
Can you have her hit star nine, because she's not coming under a name? Or give me a number?
Uh...
Did she give you a number, Josh?
Yeah, let me look in my phone, I've got it. Uh, it's three-oh-nine, three-three-three, seven-three-six-zero.
Okay, I see her. Bruce?
Bruce? Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak, I was a li- little bit late, a little bit late in joining the meeting. Um, the reason that I'm calling is that I want to encourage you to work with the Polk County Board of Supervisors to require that masks be worn in public in Des Moines and in the county. They're gonna get a similar request from me. I don't need to tell you that people in Des Moines and in the county are crying out for leadership in any number of ways. Um, I have a master's in the sociology of healthcare and healthcare delivery systems, and I've just been watching this unfold with my mouth open. I just can't believe the lack of leadership that we're seeing at the top. Um, but, you know, people are afraid not only for their own well-being, but for their children and their elderly parents, and who will take care of them if they, if they succumb to, um, the, the pandemic? Um, the World Health Organization has stated that masks may reduce the spread of COVID-nineteen by eighty-five percent, and if we'd taken appropriate measures at the beginning of the pandemic, it's very likely that we would have experienced many, many, many fewer deaths, and we'd have the pandemic well under control, much like other developed countries have. It's really easy to come up with a hundred reasons why you can't do something, but you only need one reason to do it, to do this, it's the right thing to do. I recognize that the governor has stated that she's the only person with the authority to mandate mask-wearing, but I need to ask you, what do you want your legacy to be? Do you want to be the body who took appropriate steps to slow the pandemic, or do you want to be the body who had a reason why they couldn't do it? Please have, demonstrate the leadership to implement a mask mandate, and let the governor do what she's gonna do. Please come down...
I'll receive and file her comments, and I would also can follow up that I think that we do need to do a mask mandate. I realize we can't enforce, or the governor says we can't, but I think we need to make that statement, uh, because we've got to get this thing in better control. But I'm receiving and filing.
All right.
Mayor Clowney, um, can someone from city staff provide a quick update of the masks that they ordered for free distribution? How many, how we, we done in distributing those?
Um, may I?
Rough numbers, rough numbers.
Yeah, this is Scott Sanders, city manager. I believe we're up to about six and a half thousand that have been distributed out of the first batch of ten thousand, and it, and it's going up each day.
Yeah, I, I was at a food site, uh, last Thursday and distributed two hundred. I think as we're out, uh, you know, you get ahold of the manager, he can help us get some more out, um, and, uh, we need, we need to try to keep everybody as safe as we possibly can.
Um, just a quick story, I, um, was in Ritual Cafe...
All in favor of Ruth's, uh, comments? Say aye?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
All right, go ahead, go ahead, girl.
Oh, I was in Ritual Cafe last week. Denise, uh, was pleased to have a, a package of fifty masks, and she said, gee, the only thing the city's ever given me before is a parking ticket, so, you know, I think we can get some more masks out there if we all, uh, creative about it. Thank you, Mayor Clowney.
Yeah, uh, want to thank everybody tonight, uh, anybody that has additional comments, please don't hesitate to, um, uh, contact, uh, city hall either through the manager's office or the city clerk's office, uh, to get, uh, your additional comments on record. Uh, we appreciate your, um, patience with us, uh, as we all work through everything from, um, a, uh, a pandemic to a, uh, unprecedented, uh, storm, uh, lost electricity, uh, we want to thank Mid-American for getting, uh, uh, we thank almost everybody, if not all, at least in the city of Des Moines restored, uh, but let's hope, uh, we can, uh, figure out ways that we can all work together and, um, um, support every, everybody to, uh, to do it. Again, I appreciate everybody, uh, participating this evening, council, thank you, uh, and, why don't we, uh, somebody want to move to adjourn?
Don't make a motion to adjourn.
All right, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
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 Any opposition? We sit adjourned, thank you all.